Next item is 5.11. Thank you to everyone who's been hanging around all day for this. Second reading, adopt ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to exempt agricultural building permitting for temporary hoop structures for cannabis cultivation. We have Community Development Director Turner.
Thank you. Thank you for pulling this item from consent. We just have two small things to note. First is a non-substantive change. This was basic wordsmithing and consistency wording through the document. That would be 6.25.2.A. Changing, it reads currently, "An exempt agricultural building permit for a temporary hoop structure for commercial cannabis shall be issued if all the following requirements are met." We are just requesting the switch out of "if all the following requirements are met" to be changed to "subject to the following." That is consistent then with where it's listed earlier in the permit. Secondly, there was discussion last week regarding the fire access road, and I just wanted to make one small point of clarification for the board. There was discussion about our permatees and applicants and the projects being exempt from the 4290 and 4291 standards, and there was a little bit of reference that those would apply to the fire access roads. So I just wanted to make it very clear, the board doesn't need to take any additional action on this one, but this is for the public at prospective applicants and permatees, that the requirement of a distance of no more than 150 feet from an approved fire access road comes from a separate section of the code. It comes from the California Fire Code, Section 503.1.1. And so this section of the code does not offer an exemption for agricultural projects. So also, we do have chief, fire chiefs from, where are we? CalFire and South Lake County Fire Districts present. Should you have further questions? We are working actually now, outside of this, to sort of help the industry to understand what that could look like and what options. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Spatier.
So just one change and then just an explanation?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to check in. So there is one portion, and I had it, then I moved to follow where you were, and I've lost it. It's Part C on number 1. So 1, which is permit, and then Part C. It starts with-
What line are you at?
Okay, line between 10 and 11 on page 2. I believe that's page 2, yes. Where it says, "In addition to those conducting agricultural operations." Just want to make sure that that's the appropriate language.
Thank you. This section was included when the permits were applicable to all ag. I didn't offer or didn't recommend striking it because I'm a little adverse to making substantive changes at this point, since we've had a number of first readings. However, I would defer to county council regarding its, the purpose that it might still serve, if any, and if they would recommend removal.
And if I can explain at least what my potential issue is, I know that we had a conversation and ag did not review it for what its impacts on ag is. I know the main draft is for cannabis cultivation, but at the same time, it seems to bring in ag all of a sudden in the middle of it. And I just want to make sure if we're creating regulations for an industry, I want to hear from that industry to see what the impacts could possibly be, rather than just looking to see if that would impact them. So that was my reason for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to hear from county council on that.
Okay.
So if the proposal is to delete the clause under Section Sub C, in addition, the clause "in addition to those conducting agricultural operations," that may be construed as a substantive change under the Government Code section, which the option would be to, could have this matter continued for another week, because that Government Code section does require at least five days for a second reading to take place before the ordinance is adopted. So that would be one option for the board to take, and I'm looking at, it's based on Government Code, Section 25131.
Additionally, should the board prefer to have this removed, this is the only place where it does cite that it is allowed within the approved cultivation area, so that part of it would need to be put elsewhere.
My suggestion was just get rid of that first clause of "in addition to those conducting agricultural operations," and just start that Part C from applicants, because I think that can work by just striking the first part of that comment and saying applicants with an approved cannabis cultivation permit from the County of Lake are eligible to apply for an exempt agriculture building permit for temporary hoop structures for commercial cannabis within the approved cultivation area. That seems-
Yeah, so, under Government Code, Section 25131, for, on the second instances where there is a second reading of the ordinance, only changes made based on typographical errors, clerical errors, clerical changes can only be made in order to proceed through with the adoption of the ordinance at the second reading. However, in looking at the other ordinances from other counties, some of them, as far as the second reading of the ordinance is concerned, they have, there have been instances where it was based, the clerical change would be based on whether or not the issue itself was discussed during the first reading or in prior drafts of the ordinance prior to amendments. So arguably, this might fall under that category, but with, you know, the safe is better at this point, because it is, it does deal with the substance that even in spite of it being discussed in prior instances where the board has, where the board has discussed about, references made to agriculture. At the time of the first reading, there were specific amendments that were made, and this was not one of them. And so, in that sense, you know, it may be safer, if your board wishes to do so, to just put this off or have this continue for one week with specific changes to be made, then we can proceed with, you know, the following, on the following meeting, continued date meeting for the adoption of the ordinance, as, you know, after the amendments and changes are made.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So the timeline's not what I'm worried about. I was just wondering if that wordage, if all we did was take the clause out and remain, the rest remains, if that would work. But I guess I have also a second question. If we leave it as is, does it open up a potential Pandora's Box where we're also creating regulation for an industry that has not provided their feedback to us? Or is that going to be seen as a strange situation where the ordinance is for cannabis cultivation hoop houses, temporary structures, where it accidentally says "as well as agriculture" in the middle of it? Does that open up that box? Or do they not have any access to that and it doesn't impact them?
Because there is that ambiguity by leaving that clause in there, and it does make reference to conducting agricultural operations, the rule of thumb generally is to make the ordinance be as internally consistent and clear as possible. So I do, I do see a potential issue with leaving these, leaving this in, and since it's under Sub C, it is a requirement under the introductory paragraph of 6.25 on page 1 of that ordinance. So, put it another way, there may be some potential interpretation issues if that clause were to be left in there.
Then I would prefer to see that cleaned up, even if it takes an extra week.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate moving with caution. I'm reading that as declarative of existing law. If you ended that sentence, that, at ag exempt agricultural building permit, for example, it'd be super clear that traditional ag can apply for an ag exempt agricultural building permit. This would clarify that also applicants with an approved cannabis permit could do so. I suspect we're going to come back in a week anyway, but not for reasons of this clause. So I'm interested in hearing from the folks in the audience about any proposed changes they have. I'm okay with this as is. I'm okay if you want to bring it back a week later to clean it up.
Yeah. I appreciate the clarification on, you know, the cleanest way to do it, but if we go back to our conversation we had last week, I thought that we had a consensus that we were going to remove that from this ordinance. I mean, I didn't watch it today, but I know we had plenty of long conversation, and one of the, you know, larger sticking points was making sure that anything we're doing here isn't going to be applicable to, you know, our conventional ag at that point. So our discussions last week will not cover it. What you're saying is that the cleanest way is to bring it back and remove it. So that would be my request, too. I'd rather not do another week, but-
And that would be the suggestion as an option that your board may take, only because at the previous meeting on this item, certain specific amendments were made, line items, if you will, of certain sections that were specifically changed, and this was not, this was not a part of it under Sub C. And so, to, when we talk about the cleanest way or the most streamlined way to handle or approach this, in order to avoid any potential interpretational issues, that would be the one option, is to clean, do a cleanup provision on this, on this subsection, and in any other possible amendments that may come up, and then come back on Tuesday. It is consistent with what the board had discussed, previously discussed last Tuesday, as far as excluding the ag component of it. The only, the only potential issue that, that may arise if this ordinance, as it is, is adopted, would be, you know, certain interpretations coming out of that previous Tuesday meeting, wherein specific amendments were made, but not, but no amendments as to this part. And that may be construed, or at least interpreted as, as a possible exception to what the board intended at the Tuesday meeting, which is to have this be, pertain to just cannabis and not other forms of agriculture.
I could just add a little bit. We do not anticipate having our door beaten down by non-cannabis ag looking for exempt hoop structures. We haven't had any demand prior. Additionally, in the, it says eight times in this ordinance that it is for commercial cannabis. That was per board direction over the last two first readings, that it be specific to commercial cannabis. One last thing, what part of the required application in number 4 is that the, the dates of usage is included, plans for removal, and adherence to applicable state statutes, regulations, guidelines, and the Department of Cannabis Control Regulations for temporary hoop structures for cultivation. So totally defer to the board for how you'd like to get it done. We don't anticipate an issue.
If we struck the introductory clause on that subdivision, and in so doing, we cited to the fact, we talked about this at length, and we do have eight sites limiting this ordinance to commercial cannabis, striking that introductory clause, absent any other substantive changes, would striking that clause with the context from the prior hearings be a substantive change?
In looking at the other ordinances that have been passed, say, in other counties, and in looking at the issue that other counties have faced regarding the second readings of ordinance and any changes in amendments that have taken place, the answer to that is arguably, some counties have taken the position that if it was discussed by the board supervisors at the first reading of the ordinance, if this particular issue was discussed, then it would count. Some counties have determined that it has, that it does consist, that the amendments to make it consistent with the board's intent and discussion at the first reading would count as, as a clerical change, and to, and also for purposes of making it internally consistent with the ordinance. So there is certainly an argument there. Other counties have taken what I would, what they've called the quote unquote "safer route" in saying, in taking the position that typographical errors and clerical corrections under that Government Code section for purposes of a second reading would only consist of misspellings, certain things that were left out, that to make it, again, internally consistent with, say, some of the exhibits that were attached to the, to the ordinance, and, and they stop there, and nothing further. So you do have, because the Government Code section, there's not a lot of extensive case law discussion regarding what would count as, as a substantive amendment or as a typ- typographical errors are clear enough, but when it comes to clerical changes, clerical errors, that's where the ambiguity lies. So the answer, again, just to sum, to sum up, is there is an argument there. And so the, there is an argument for, for this not counting as a clerical change, or this not counting as a substantive change, so that it would be clerical error, for purposes of making it internally consistent, especially in light of the board's prior discussion. There is still that potential risk, of course, that somebody would come in and interpret that clause to open the door of sorts. And it would hinge in part with how one would interpret the clause "in addition to those conducting agricultural operations," either as declarative, or either actually as a requirement, or as a precondition to Sub C, which would make it substantive under that argument.
Supervisor Krendel?
Okay, so I have a question about the Sub C. Morea, what agricultural operations would require an exempt structure, traditional ag?
The requirement for a structure, be it permanent or temporary, is either a building permit, actually, it is a building permit. And so this is just giving an option for exempt, an exempt structure. So this would be bypassing the building permit, which would require engineered plans and an inspection, or at least one inspection. So this would, there is nothing that requires exempt structures. This is just providing an option to come alongside and support in case, in the case of exempt ag structures for barns, farming that needs barns, or in this new instance, farming that would require, or that could benefit from temporary hoop structures.
That's, that's, that's what my next question was. Wouldn't it, it doesn't negatively affect agriculture? I mean, am I reading it wrong?
No, it does not negatively affect. And in fact, in last week's discussion, the board did specify that this was for agricultural, temporary agricultural structures over 5 feet in height. And the purpose of that, through that discussion, was to exempt maybe the strawberry covers and the smaller covers, but rather focus on those structures that are between 5 and 12 feet in height.
All right, thanks.
Okay. I will open it up to the public now. Do we have anybody in the chambers?
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. I hope to make this a little bit simpler of a decision, because I'm going to ask you to continue.
Can you give your name, please?
Yeah. This is Sarah Bodnar. I'm the Policy Director for LCCA. And I am going to ask that you continue this with one tiny change. We've had a chance to talk today, Fire and I, as we've been hanging out here, and we understand, you know, collectively as an industry, that this is about farming safely, and that we're not all going to agree on every single detail. But it is super important that we have regulations this year. So I want to modify the letter that we submitted and just narrow it to one request, which was Item 1. With the consideration of needing to be within 150 feet of the fire road for safe access at the end of your hoops, we'd like to simply request that the hoops can be 150 feet long instead of 100. And kind of acquiesce to the other request of keeping 3 feet between each hoop right now. It doesn't seem like people are comfortable with that, and although it's done in other counties, we need to get hoops this year. So instead of removing the 3-foot distance, LCCA would like to request that hoops can simply be 150 feet in length, because that will give us more efficiency than keeping them at 100. So for Section 2A2, changing that maximum length to 150 and remove the square footage of, limit of 2,000 feet for each hoop, because they would be longer. And if we could make that change, and the other change to clean up the ordinance and move this forward to next week, we'd be happy for this season. Thank you.
We're here again. Good morning and good afternoon. So yeah, we, on behalf of the fire chiefs, we'd really appreciate, you know, that we try to follow that 503-1-1, so that, you know, the 3-foot clearance, when we had these original discussions, they were 10-foot apart. We agreed to go 3-foot, gives us access in between the hoop houses. And then on, on the majority of our engines, our crosslaser's are set at 200 foot. So having that max of 150 foot and having an access road, it gives us ability to get additional resources in between, whether it be a rescue, an ambulance, an engine, or whatever it needs. So we'd really appreciate the support of maintaining that within the ordinance. And really, it's all life safety components that we really want to make sure the farming is safe. In those hoop houses, we can look at 150% humidity with the heat, and so there's a good probability for somebody to sustain a heat-related environmental emergency. So, thank you. I was under 3 minutes.
You had 1 minute. Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Spatier?
It sounded like there was not a opposition to changing that to 150 feet. It sounds like there's two different groups in this room that are in concurrence of what can be changed, so I'm okay with that. I am, I am willing to say that, I would like to see it changed, but I would like to say that we had enough of a conversation that we requested to take the traditional ag completely out of this version that we have in front of us today. And I'm comfortable enough to say that we can make that change, but then again, it requires another week with the changes we would be making. So I would request that we make both changes. I apologize for that. But I do want to bring up something that somebody told me last week, actually, one of our staff members, who was just in here earlier this morning. There was the idea of it's hard to find people inside a hoop house, it's hard to see over it. Using the flag method that we use on our boats when we're in our lake, maybe applying that in the workforce, as far as how your farm runs, to put a flag at the hoop house that you're going in, that way, if somebody has to come find you and there's no one else that can point where you are, that that's an easy method to find out who went into a hoop house and where they might be located. Just wanted to express that, because I thought it was a good idea. It does help with boats, to be able to see that orange flag out there. So those are my comments.
Supervisor Green?
That's an interesting idea. Thank you.
Not mine.
I'm just trying to do that to a pear grower. We should be flagging pears. I don't know. I appreciate very much the collaborative spirit. I can live with the suggested change. Question for staff, though, I did share, because I was reminded by multiple people, 2019, this board passed a resolution trying to give some clarity to enforcement of fire road standards in our commercial cannabis operations, and that same resolution gave direction to bring back standards. Obviously, that was many years ago, and different people were filling different roles at that I can support this moving forward with the amendments proposed, but I still think we are, in so doing, we're well short of what the goal of that 2019 resolution was, to bring some clarity once and for all for how this is going to be applied, where and when. Maybe this is a positive step forward in bringing forward that master direction. But it was pretty clear in that resolution that we were not to be picking and choosing how we're going to enforce fire road standards for cannabis only, without addressing with equal force and vigor what they should be in agricultural operations not involving cannabis. So my immediate question is, is this proposed ordinance in conformance with the direction that the board gave in 2019, as it applies to 4290 road standards? That's my first question.
That will take me a moment to pull up the resolution. I don't have it on hand, so. While I'm looking that up, I would also request clarity. I think Sarah, Ms. Bodnar, requested a removal of the maximum square footage of 2,000 square feet. So I just wanted a little clarity on that one. Are we totally removing, oh, thank you, maximum area allowances? Because unlike other parts of the ag structure ordinance, this does not have a percentage of canopy area maximum. So if we remove the 2,000 square foot maximum square footage, I'm just looking for board direction on if anything should replace that.
How does everybody feel about that? I'm fine with that.
I think either way, it spells the same limitations, because a maximum of 20 feet and a maximum of 150 feet is basically 3,000 square feet. And if we don't have 3,000 square feet, it's still 3,000 square foot maximum. That's the way that I read it, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with change.
Okay. Did you say 3,000?
Well, if it was 20 by 150, it would be 3,000, but whether it's there or not, I really don't see the difference, so not having it there is fine.
Okay. And just after a very quick scan of this resolution, 2019-124, it does make reference to the Public Resource Code 4290 and 4291. It does not cite California Fire Code 503.1.1. I don't know, I'm unable to discern if it was the intention of the board to try to find an exemption to that one, but our research through the code shows that, so far has shown that that doesn't, there is no exemption that exists for agricultural operations. So 503.1.1 will still stand regardless of the exemption for 4290 and 4291, is my understanding. And if the fire chiefs would like to correct me if I'm mistaken, that would be greatly appreciated.
Supervisor Spatier?
So Supervisor Simon, or Vice Chair Simon and myself were part of those discussions. That was never part of our discussion. It was solely 4290 and 4291, hence the resolution that you're reading that does not suggest any other changes to the Fire Code.
So it does not indicate, then, that this, this ordinance would be out of line from the spirit of that resolution?
Then my follow-up question would be, just like we're cleaning up this language, was whatever that code section was referenced during your debate on 4290? Or is that just one of 15 different fire codes that got bandied about, and that was an incomplete discussion in 2019, just because we weren't drilling down into the, and so that Chapter 5 you're talking about, is that a structure ordinance? I kind of lost. Where does 4290 end in this clause you're talking about begin? And why was that clause not addressed in 2019?
I would request the input from our fire chiefs, because I'm not familiar with Public Resource Code versus California Fire Code. I'm not sure where they dovetail, how they work together, so I would defer that question.
Hi, Chiefs, been a happy, happy afternoon. Yeah, there's not a clear understanding on 4290 in regards to ag, but the California Fire Code clearly defines that. In 2019, the fire chiefs weren't involved that much in cannabis. In 2018, we began our ordinance after the California Fire Code, Chapter 38, came out in draft. So amongst four counties, Yolo County, Mendo, Lake, and Colusa got together, and we tried to stamp some stuff out, and I know Bernie and I have had multiple conversations, is in 2019, we weren't really involved with the ordinance. You had brought it by me to look at, gave you some feedback, and then all of a sudden, when it came to the board, we kind of said, oh, we need to really pay attention to this. And, and it took us some time to get on the cannabis task force. And so part of that lapse was a lack of communications amongst the agencies. And so part of that lapse was a lack of communications amongst the agencies. But in 2019, we were embedded with COVID, so there was a lot of things that we missed during that period of time, and that's kind of when we came to the table, is bringing all of the codes that we follow to kind of educate everyone on those, the resource codes and the fire codes, as they change, and they change very, very rapidly, you know, so I think that it was a miscommunication in 2019 for us not being fully on board and being embedded with the process of that ordinance.
And then if I can ask, and it may be memory serves, I know, three years ago, when that resolution was passed, it looks like the paragraph at the very end was, was an amendment that the board gave direction at that time, and that was to direct staff to bring back and engage with our fire departments about 4290 as it applies to ag generally. I'm guessing that didn't happen, or COVID and all that. Is that something we still need to do? I know I'm talking about a resolution versus this.
Yeah, is this something that is for this particular revision? Because we are, we have a big time crunch today, and we've got to move through these items, so that's, I just want some clarity on that.
I want some conformity between what we did three years ago, four years ago now, and where we're headed. So I think I got the question answered, that the resolution only applied to 4290, so if we pass this ordinance before today, it would not directly conflict, conflict directly at least with the 2019 resolution. But I also want some clarity, if not today, then at some time appropriate, that whatever that last paragraph in the resolution was done, we're going to come back and talk about 4290 some more, so.
And that is why we are, and you know, either Paul Blues or myself, or Paul Duncan are at all the cannabis task force meetings, and we're engaged in it. So we are trying to catch and identify those shortfalls and loopholes, and that's kind of why we're here today, is that, you know, that part of the California Fire Code is very important to us, and that's, that's why we do come and, and speak and say, hey, we need to have some clarity and some changes here. So we are very well engaged with that with Mireia and Andrew as we move forward. Like I said, Paul, Paul or myself are at every meeting, and see us on Zoom or in person. So I think that that, that bridging of communications has been, been established and moving forward. So, yeah, I think that those parts, and Mireia's been amazing to work with, so I think that we're on the right track.
We really appreciate you being here today, and appreciate all of the participation and make this the best draft we can get to.
It's all good.
And then move it forward. Supervisor Spatier?
Just want to finish off with, the main purpose of the conversation that led to that resolution was accessing the farm. So from the main roads to the main area where you would park your car and then start working. And so this fire code that we're talking about is more surrounding the environment of the farm, not accessing the farm. So we had a very specific subject that we were tackling with that resolution, and I think that it's, it still fits and it still works. No conflict.
Yeah, and there was a lot of conversation, as you said, the access to the roads, some of these things are very rural, bridges were a challenge for holding the vehicles to get out there. There was a lot of conversation at that time, a lot of moving parts, but I do appreciate the collaboration that's happening now, and no simple answer to any of these questions, but I think we'll continue working on it.
As the cannabis task force continues to update the cannabis policy, part of that is taking a look at standards for cultivation. We'll just make a note that this is included and is of particular interest in the board, so that we can make sure that that is a thorough and deliberate conversation to derive some recommendations to bring back to you.
Okay, so this is direction to bring back the draft again next week, correct?
Or do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
To the first reading?
It would be a motion.
Okay.
To have the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption with, I'll redo it again, sorry, I apologize. Motion to have the ordinance as amended be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption, with the amendments that were covered here in this meeting.
So moved, and the amendments would be to strike the clause on 1C, that states in addition to those conducting agricultural operations, and then to switch on to, I can't see, to A, 2A2, to make it maximum of 20 feet and maximum length of 150 feet, and scratch off the maximum square footage.
And there is also, if I may, I believe Ms. Turner also had one proposed amendment to.
That would be in 2A, Section 2A, Line 27, changing if all of the following requirements are met to subject to the following.
And that, that is my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
See you next time.
See you next week.
Getting close.
See you next time.
Okay.